Seven o'clock, we're gonna call to order. The Cohasset Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, April 29th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We are at 91 Sawyer Street, Willcut Commons. It's an in-person meeting, however, people can tune into Zoom, which is on, the link is on the backside of the agenda. They can watch us on Cohasset 143 or Facebook Live stream. May I have a call to order, please? Mr. Plex?
Ms. Plex here.
Paul Grady present.
Jack Creighton here.
David Frog here.
Ellen Mar present. Since Mr. Frog is remote, all of our votes tonight will be taken by roll call. I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Could you have the voice count? Help us with that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? No public comment? Kevin, any public comment? No? Okay, so we will go right into our first agenda item, which is a public hearing for the transfer of a license. One moment, let me call up the language here. So this is a public hearing notice. The Cohasset Select Board acting as a local licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 29th, 2025 at 7:05 PM at 91 Sawyer Street, Willcut Commons, Cohasset, Mass. to consider the application for a transfer of license. Chapter 12, general on-premise, all annual alcohol license from Nine Depot Inc., DBA, the Blue War, to Hoopers Judge LLC located at Nine Depot Court, Cohasset, Mass. An applications for a common victor license and new manager for the transferee. The proposed manager is Brian J. McLaughlin. The premise consists of approximately 1,600 square feet plus three designated storage cage spaces in the basement, plus a brick patio in front of 13 Depot Court and the side of Nine Depot Court, all of which are surrounded by a common, by common areas and accessways, plus an eight by eight foot footprint for a walk-in cooler adjacent to storage container. One entrance, one exit, occupancy 124 with seating for 80 inside and 24 patio seats. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of tonight's public hearing by emailing selectboardcomments@cohassetma.gov or in person at the hearing. Public can also attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform on the back of tonight's agenda. Agenda will be available, has been available online at www.cohassetma.gov. The meeting's hearing notices of the calendar section located on the bottom of the front page of the website. The full application is available in the Select Board office. So may I have a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Ms. Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, so do we have representatives from the applicant?
Yes, aye.
Would you please come up? And are you also?
Yeah.
Okay, you can, you can bring a chair up as well and, and name an affiliation and address for the record.
Okay, so my name is Attorney Jeff DeLeese, Orenberger, DeLeese &amp; Harris, out of Citrus, Massachusetts. Next to me is Brian McLaughlin. Brian is the applicant or the manager of the LLC applicant. And the property concerns Nine Depot Street. You guys are familiar with this location, the Blue War, the formerly also Dooley's. This is a transfer of liquor license from the former owner of the, of the restaurant, which previously was at the location, meaning the Blue War, to Brian, as well as an application where we've applied for entertainment and common vic. The notice for that has gone out and that will be heard at the next meeting, I believe. So basically, most of you know Brian Seberg Coffee Company. He's entered into a purchase and sale agreement to buy the assets of the restaurant, Blue War. He intends to repurpose the restaurant as a gastro pub named Hoopers Judge, which is gonna serve craft cocktails and upscale pub food. There is no change or no proposed change to the maximum number of seats in the restaurant on the licensed premises. Brian has been involved with the restaurant business since he was 12 years old as a dishwasher through college, has managed open restaurants, managed restaurants. He has a restaurant here in Hingham, which is a Mexican restaurant known as Locale's Tacos and Tequila or Eat Tequila. And essentially, he's well-versed. He's reviewed your regulations, your liquor regulations. He's tip certified. He has, has arranged for, is in the process of arranging for assistant managers at his Hingham location so that he can be here on premises full-time at this proposed restaurant. His liquor license in Hingham has zero violations. He, he's familiar with the community. His concept is lunch and dinner seven days a week, also brunch on occasion for special occasions and potentially weekend days. He's asking for hours of operation of 10:00 AM to 12:30 AM. There are 24 seasonal seats outside, which they're still, still will be or are proposed to be. But the current liquor license does allow outdoor seats. And he's already begun his interior renovation. And so basically, this application is cog in the wheel or step in the process and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to open up soon.
Great, thank you. I see we have Chief Quigley here. Chief, do you want to comment?
No, just that the detectives did a background on Mr. McLaughlin, no issues whatsoever.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the board?
Just one question, so it sounds like it, it's really a change in the menu from the Blue War. Hours of operation, effectively similar, capacity effectively similar?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Grady?
Where's the outdoor seating?
To the right, if you're looking at the building to the right in front of Peel Pizza, there's like a square brick patio.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Creighton?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And I think it's a good example of doing it right, following the rules. And so when you come up to expand, we say, well, you did it right before. So sales right through. Thank you and thank you for providing a good example of how a responsible business can handle a very sensitive issue like liquor licenses.
I appreciate it, Jack.
Mr. Frog?
No comments. It seems to be very straightforward. Application is passable.
Okay, I, I have a couple of questions. So hours of operation 10 to 12:30 AM, Sunday through Saturday, seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay, is that congruent with our current hours of operation for other?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And you will be the manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you know you're required to be there for, for 40 hours?
Correct.
Right, okay.
I'm sure.
And assuming approval tonight, how, when do you think you'll open?
Well, that will depend on when the ABCC, I think, gets back to you, to myself.
Okay.
So if I can get as much done, the dream would be open in July.
Okay.
So we've done a decent amount of renovation inside. I haven't gone all the way in yet until I know a little more about where I stand. So hopefully it'll, hopefully it'll be joy.
Are you, are you doing a lot of renovations?
Not really, just a little facelift, basically.
Facelift, yeah, make it a little lighter and brighter.
Yeah, and it's, it's, so far it looks beautiful. I'm very excited to unveil it to everyone, so.
Tracy, is this just the all-alcohol on-premise license? And the common vic entertainment will be at? Okay. We'll.
Restaurant, so we'll have a ready.
Okay, so we'll keep the hearing open then?
The hearing is on the alcohol.
Okay.
They'll send it to the ABCC, they, they will have.
Okay.
But we weren't planning on attending the entertainment license hearing, but if you want us to attend, we will. We're not proposing any outdoor entertainment at all. This is more, you can probably explain, but just.
Inside, the opportunity to have like a live musician inside.
Okay, and, and it's been there in the past.
It has, yeah.
Okay.
I just didn't want you to be concerned about amplification in a neighborhood or quasi-neighborhood environment.
I think we'll probably put it on for next Tuesday's agenda. And you can join on Zoom, but I, I don't think unless anyone requires you to be here, you don't have to be here. We, we have enough background.
Thank you.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the all-alcohol annual license for Hoopers Judge LLC?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. May I have a motion to approve the common victor license for Hoopers Judge LLC?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Ms. Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. About to vote. Thank you very much. Good luck.
So much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now we have a continued public hearing for the tran, from April 8th. A transfer of license, it was from Lenny's Hideaway. And the applicant has requested to withdraw the application. So I'd like a motion to close the public hearing for the all-alcohol and common victor license.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Ms. Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, next up, Safe Harbor Coalition. I think we had some speakers. Come on up.
This is a permitting for the signs?
Okay, yep.
All right, so good evening. So we were the beneficiaries of the Rotary Fun Walk this year. We're hoping to do it going forward. And during the walk, we had about 39 to 40 signs along the route that had, and I'm Nicole Block, by the way, that had information, local data from our students, local resources that the community, we just want to make them aware of some of the jarring information that comes from the WRBS that we, we administer every two years. And then how the community can, can address it if they need help or if they wanted to get involved. So we had community members who participated in that walk and came up to us and said, we'd really like to see this on the common to have it more of an awareness for the community. So National Prevention Week is May 11th through the 17th. It's every year, it's an annual awareness week for suicide awareness, for substance use awareness and overall mental health. So we're hoping to put those signs on the common, similar to a story walk, for May 1st through the 10th, leading up to National Prevention Week. So this would bring awareness to May 11th through the 17th.
Okay, great, so these are the actual signs?
These are the actual signs, yes.
And what, what size are they?
They are 18 by 24. So they're a lawn sign and they're in the stakes.
Okay, great. Any questions, Mr. Plex?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Grady?
Oh, thanks, great.
Mr. Creighton?
Well done.
The Youth Ambassadors did these. I thank you for well done, but I had no part.
No, I was just talking about what you have done in this town.
Thank you.
Along with the Safe Harbor Coalition, I see we have members here. A sea change from Cohasset, which used to be known for kids getting, I was about to say wasted or whatever, and now we have so many kids who are getting positive reinforcement and knowing that it's possible to live in a community and you don't have to have your social life surrounded by drugs and alcohol. And well done, well done. Anybody else that needs a well done? All the citizens in, oh, well done. All the citizens and the scouts, of course. Everybody come in, anyway, thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Frog?
No questions, just a comment. It, it seems that the, the program seemed to be expanding and, you know, really taking hold. So I think it's just another aspect of it to, to, you know, have it embedded in the community more.
Thank you, yeah. That's definitely our plan going forward, sustainability.
In, in reading through it, and maybe it's a topic for another meeting, but also I've been doing some research on, you know, anxiety in kids. And the high school just ran a, they, they had a consultant come in to review the athletic program and what the consultant met with some of the kids and they talked a lot about stress and anxiety on the athletes. And we have our scout, are you nodding your head at that? Yep, and the, and then there's a lot of studies out there on screen time contributing to stress and anxiety. And like I said, maybe that's a topic for another day, but it would be worthwhile to explore because anxiety and stress and depression lead to substance abuse.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so we're working with the schools. They had, just had Elizabeth, Elizabeth Englander as a follow-up to the anxious generation. So that's something that we talk about with the Youth Ambassadors almost weekly. Specifically, the, the screen times with social media and kind of how that plays a part. So they have kind of, I would say, open, honest conversations when they get together. But it is something that we are looking at and we just did the data on April 15th. They just gave it to the middle school and high school. So we'll have the 2025 data to compare.
Oh, great.
But specifically the athletes do, we're looking at that this year.
Yeah. Well, because so many high school kids play sports.
Yeah, about 80% of them.
Yeah, it's a very high, and a lot of them play multiple sports.
Yes.
Okay, so the, the dates are May 1st to 10th?
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the Safe Harbor Cohasset Coalition Display of Signs for National Prevention Week?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Ms. Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is the pre-prom. Come on up. Oh, that's okay, name, name and address, please?
Danielle Z, 80, 12 Hillside Drive.
Hi, welcome. So you put in an application for the traditional red carpet pre-prom, pre-prom?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And it's out of the, the church?
Correct, like we did last year, so it's the same as we did last year.
We're hopeful we'll have the town hall open for next year.
That sounds good to me.
If you have any, any children.
Yes, the next year is my, I'm coming up, so.
Okay. Oh, are you a parent of a junior?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you get roped into it.
Yes.
Yeah, been there several times. Okay, the application seemed pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any questions about it? No?
My daughter would kill me if I were.
When you have a senior, that's whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's something to, it's something to see. It's really, it's really nice how the community comes out for it, whether you have kids in school or not. And, and to see everybody all dressed up, it's quite nice. Mr. Creighton, any questions?
Well done, I'm sure you'll have a good time.
Well, yes, I'm already, we're putting in our backup plan, but we don't want the backup plan for the.
Just so you know, if you screw it up, might as well just move out of.
No pressure.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Mr. Frog?
No questions.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the Cohasset pre-prom red carpet event on the common, May 23rd, 2025?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Ms. Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
And I think bum next to for the signs.
For the senior pictures?
Yes.
Okay.
It rolls into the whole.
Rolls into it, yep. So this is to put up the, the senior pictures, this has been going on, I don't know, three, four years now?
Yeah.
I, I think you got a hand up from Chief Quigley.
Oh, Mr. Quigley, Chief Quigley?
Madam Chair, just to, to go hand in hand with the pre-prom, we're gonna need entertainment license as well? Because they're, they're using a PA system on the common?
Yes, okay, so do we have an application for that?
No.
No, so.
I think I noted it in the, it was noted on the, the event application on the cover sheet, I believe.
I did put a PA system, I believe, but I don't remember.
You did put the PA. I don't, I don't have the cover. Just have the application. So public announcer system will be used. Insurance requirement, police department. Review, okay, so we can, we can approve the event and then the entertainment. You can get an application for the entertainment license.
Okay.
You don't have to come back next week.
Okay.
Put it on next week's agenda for approval for the entertainment license. Thank you, Chief.
No problem.
Okay. Oh, so that was for prom? Okay, we were onto senior pictures, okay, prom.
Yeah, so that was the.
That was for prom, okay. So the senior, the senior picture, so from May 11th to June 7th?
Yes.
Okay. And graduate?
What they, it's because it's, I think that's graduation day. I think we give them until graduation day to pick them up.
To pick them up, okay. And the ones that don't get picked up?
Then we take away.
Okay, okay. Silly question, do you alternate which way they lean, whether you, they go north or south? Depending on which way you drive? Because if you put them straight?
Yeah, they, I think they are tilted, they're, they're tilted, so when you're going out of town, because that's because they're on that side. So I believe they are tilted a little bit.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or questions? Nope, okay, so can I have a motion to approve the Cohasset senior picture display? Photos on the common from May 11th to June 7th?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Ms. Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Joseph Carvallo. Did I say it correctly or? Okay, our Eagle Scout Project, our Community Kiosk, welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
So my full name is Joseph Patterson Carvallo and my address is 45 Fair Oaks Lane.
Great, thank you.
I have in-print copies of my slideshow if anybody wants them.
Oh, I love paper. Thank you.
So. Hi, my name is Joe Carvallo. I am a member of 28 Cohasset and this is my Eagle Scout Project. It is a community kiosk. So the agenda for today, so first, we're gonna start with an overview of the project in general. Then I'm gonna go into the group benefits for the project. Next, I'm going to talk about my plan for the project and the process. And finally, I'm going to finish with my budget. Okay, so my Eagle Scout, my Eagle Scout Project proposal is to build a community kiosk for Safe Harbor. It will be used to post messages and events. This kiosk will be updated every two weeks and new messages will be added. The kiosk will also have a lost and found box on the side so that lost items can be returned. To prevent misuse and harmful messaging, the kiosk will be locked at all times. The lock code will be given to Safe Harbor, the Director of Communications, and people who want their messages displayed on the kiosk will have to apply through them. So this is the second part of my overview. So this is the Harvey Trail Kiosk. It is a kiosk from which I and Safe Harbor and Nicole Belashi, we saw a great inspiration from this kiosk to just a visual representation of what we were going for. So the benefits of this kiosk, this project is gonna be used to create a stronger community, will be used by organizations such as Safe Harbor to inform the general public about events. As you know, not everybody uses the internet, so this kiosk will help inform these groups about upcoming events. This also, this kiosk will also be very convenient as it will be a place where you can find many events. Alright, so this is the blueprints of the kiosk. It's going to be approximately eight feet tall, four feet wide. It will have a cedar shingle roof with a cork board backing in the center and it will be painted gray. Side view of the blueprints, again, you can see from the side. Alright, so this is my preliminary cost. So materials, I have gone to Hingham Lumber Company and they have given me an estimated cost of $560 for the materials. However, they are willing to discount up to $200. I have also calculated out that my supplies needed for the project, such as snacks and other things to help my workers, will cost around $40 to $50. And that gives me an estimated cost total of around $400. Alright, safety and management. Adults will be operating all power tools in this project with accordance of the BSA guidelines to prevent injury on site. Workers under my care will be given proper supervision and they will wear appropriate clothes such as gloves, eyewear and proper shoe wear. I will also have the area roped off during construction. Alright, so this is my timeline right now of how I hope this project is going to go. So April, I was hoping to obtain the approval from the Select Board, which I am here now. By May and June, I will have successfully obtained all permits required for this project. I'll go into detail of that on the next slide. By June, July, summer, I will begin fundraising and prepare to start construction. And then by the end of the summer, August, late August, maybe early September, I'm hoping to have completed this project. So the possible locations, so Safe Harbor has provided two primary locations. The first one is located at the bottom of State Stevens Church near the benches is the first photo you see right there. To my understanding, I, if this location is selected, I will need to go to the Cohasset Historical Society to get further approval for this place. The secondary location requested is the park next to community center. I believe it's called Constitution Park. Alright, so finally, from the Select Board view, what I'm hoping to get out of this meeting is approval of this project, confirmation of the location if this project is approved. And I finally hope to get just a clearance on if I should communicate you going forward. After this meeting is done and if my project is approved, I will move on to the Historical Society permits if that location one is selected. Then I have already talked to Mr. Howland, I have just waited for approval from this meeting and I'm ready to get the building permits. After that, I will go to the troop and committee and council and they will give me the approvals from the Scouts BSA. And finally, I'll contact DigSafe for the site. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Any questions, comments?
First, I just want to compliment you for thinking of DigSafe. You were people and you would imagine actually things to do that, so good for you for thinking of it. When you talked to the Historical Society, I think they were considering putting a sign there of talking about the history of the common in a very similar location, might have talked to them about matching pink colors, things like that.
Yeah.
I don't think that's anything that needs to come back to Select.
That's actually a friend of mine is doing that for his Eagle Scout project.
Good, so maybe you can buy paint from Bulk. In any event, I'm sure they'll have input for some of the little details, but it's a great project. Appreciate you bringing it to us.
Fantastic presentation and well thought out. I'm all for it.
Mr. Creighton?
Congratulations. And on the behalf of the community, thank you and thank the Scouts. Thank your parents. This is probably one of the most important parts of, of Cohasset and various youth groups, but the Scouts go back forever. I was a scout, we could never go anywhere because we didn't, we didn't have the, the community support, which is very, very important. But it ultimately comes down to building character. And when you can come up before a town board and make a presentation like that, it tells me that perhaps future of our nation is in good hands. Thank you.
Mr. Frog?
Thank you, terrific project, great presentation. I, I agree with the comments that Mr. Plex made about just checking with where the other one is going in on the common and just making sure it fits in as well there. But, but once again, great project, gonna be a wonderful addition to the town.
I concur, very well done. I'm very impressed with your presentation, your articulation, your thoughtfulness and, and your organization of this. It was terrific. Does the board have any comments or?
Madam Chair, I mean, I think the place you coordinate with the historical side is important, but it's the common historic district you're gonna need to talk to.
Alright.
So just to clarify that.
Okay.
There's a committee that reviews everything that goes on the common and around.
There's a committee that reviews everything that goes on the Common and around.
Alright. Okay, Common Historic District, okay. Um, so i- if the board's in favor of that location as opposed to the, the secondary choice, I think, I think we can approve that, that location pending approval from the Common Historic Commission.
What's your preference?
Uh, so Safe Harbor primarily wants that location. However, if that location is denied, uh, we were hoping to get approval for the other thing as well as a backup.
And that's the park that's across from like what Barber Shop is, that area, yeah. Yeah, I think the Common is a much more traversed area by kids. They hang out there. They play on the Common. They, you know, throw the, the football or the frisbee around, um, ride their bikes. I think it's, it's a more visible location.
Alright.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve, uh, Joseph Carvallo's Community Kiosk on the Common as presented tonight?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Plex, aye.
Paul Ready, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
And David Frog, aye.
Ellen Marr, aye. Thank you. And love to have you come back when it's completed. Show us pictures.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Open Space and Recreation Earth Day Cleanup. Hi. Name and address.
Elips White, twenty-five James Lane. I'm in good hands with my neighbors here. Uh, uh, I'm here to, uh, apply for the, uh, Earth Day Cleanup this Saturday. I apologize for the lateness. I mistaken, I, uh, we dropped the ball. Uh, but I'm hoping that you will, uh, uh, accept our proposal, um, for cleaning up, uh, the wetlands and the, uh, the, um, the town area. Yeah. We have, um, gotten a dumpster today, approval from Gramways for a dumpster. Uh, but, uh, uh, we need your help. We, we have no money in our budget, so we would need the town to be able to pay for that. Um, and we would also need your help with tables and chairs. So that would be entail, um, uh, people, uh, two workers to help set it up Saturday morning and take it down Saturday afternoon. I had asked for two tables, but, um, I was told six tables would be better and ten chairs.
Okay. Okay, um, Mr. Senior, I, I assume that this is traditional providing tables and chairs?
Yeah, I think so. It depends on the year and just, I don't think that'll be a problem. Uh, I know that Public Works has been working fewer with Ginny, I think.
Jenny has called. We haven't, um, yeah, she couldn't be here tonight, but, uh, uh, we haven't gotten so many yeses. We've gotten more no's.
So, I, I know that in the past, there's been an ability to get a dumpster, and last I heard, told that someone might donate a dumpster, and we'll take care of it.
Okay, there wa- uh, what's not donated, uh, honey, could you, to that, honey, I'm sure.
No, so Gramways, um, and we, we apologize. We had a change of leadership except for over the last couple of months. And unfortunately, obviously, it all kind of got dropped. We all were talking about it, but all our partners, but we neglected to. So I apologize. But, uh, no, Gramways is terrific. They stepped forward and they've offered us their special rate, which I had in the past. So instead of the normal almost thousand dollar, ninety, ninety-five dollar charge, we're just rocking on, making off the dumpster. Uh, they waived all of that, and we'll have our normal, uh, pro rata rate, which is, uh, a hundred and eighty-five dollars per ton. And last year, we just under one ton, so we would expect to be around the same. And they highlighted, again, which we'll talk towards, but this, this time, last year, we had, um, six tires, and for every tire, it was like sixty-five dollars. So which we encourage, you know, people to get the tires out of the wetlands and that sort of thing. But, um.
We might take them a share for cheaper, so they can find them.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And they also, so, um, so whatever, we're all set with that. That's great. And I think they've done, you know, really great community burdens to, to, for that. Um, I would say my, my really concern in light of, for example, the, the dumpster is going to be dropped off at one hundred Sawyer Street, which is in front of the rec department, right along the library. And it'll be dropped off early Friday in conjunction with Ted Carroll, and then picked up Sunday morning. So between our cleanup, which ends at two P M. Saturday, with the notification that those sort of participants can, can come later and drop off. Um, we just hope people don't drop off process, which we will be charged five hundred dollars for. Uh, computers are certain things that are just not accepted. So we have to get with it. We have to be more diligent. Or be aware, and it might even involve from maybe sharing with Chief Quinley. So keep an eye on this big dumpster that's sitting there, that it doesn't become used, where, where we will be charged. And then again, you do not have to, so. Yeah, that, that's, sir.
And, and just one thing, Madam Chair, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, just, just be aware that the Little League Parade is also occurring Saturday morning. So we're gonna have road closures in the area of the Common between like seven thirty Saturday morning and probably nine thirty. So it's, it's gonna be, um, blocked off with dump trucks, uh, for the parade. So just be aware of that.
Yeah, thank you. We ran the same pump last year.
That, that'll be on the, the Main Street side, right?
Correct. Main Street between, uh, between the Common and, uh, Red Gate Lane.
Right, okay.
We're in Sawyer. We ran the same thing, we're simply, me, problem.
Okay.
Because we went from one to two.
Oh, I know the other thing we needed, work, the trash bags, but the DPW has the trash bags. Is that correct?
We have the ones we pay for, I don't know if we have bags per se.
The black plastic.
Yeah.
Yellow.
Um. So again, I know this, I, I've, I've seen some emails of Brian going back and forth with Jenny, so I have not been in the middle of this. Why don't we talk a flight after and make sure all the eyes are done and the pieces crossed?
Okay.
Where the bags are from.
Good. You know, I understand you're, you're struggling, and I'm a little bit aware of that. However, I think that Select Board might consider instructing the town manager to provide all needed assistance and also to make sure that we have a dollar amount, um, appropriated that, you know, give us a figure. Because even though perhaps as a volunteer board, you could have come earlier and all that, the fact is, this is a townwide thing. It's a wonderful thing. It's run by volunteers, and I think we can have, you know, if the, my other Select Board members agree, we could grant you some latitude and we can instruct the town manager to, to, to do what needs to be done and to facilitate that. I, I can't think of, of a nicer thing to do for Earth Day. And do I need to put that as a motion?
And it's, it's what we put, so you have to be careful on who's available. So I, yeah, I know there's already been conversations, so I know, I know there have been conversations. So my understanding is that things shouldn't be all together. That said, you know, our support is, for this is typically very basic. It's just to have a couple of people to make sure that, you know.
Yeah.
Loaded and also we're not, uh, at the same time, it is, is a Saturday, so our staff's not totally there, so we have to make sure that people are, you know.
So we, we just figure a reasonable amount. I mean, we, we, you know, you, you have to have your volunteers there and, and all that. And, and I think that, um, we might want to have a chair of the Select Board oversee the expenditures to make sure it's correct. But I think it should be the sense of the Select Board to facilitate this.
Mr. Plex, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, no, happy to support, you know, within reason. We're not gonna throw a dozen police officers at the dumpster overnight to make sure nobody throws a mattress in, but, you know. Happy to help you make it happen next year, and if we can be helpful and get ahead of the next year, we certainly.
Well, I believe it's not, you need ninety days. That's the typical application. So we'll, we'll be back in February next year. So, and our apologies.
Hundred and eighty years.
Oh, I second, uh, Mr. Plex's comments.
Okay, Mr. Frog?
Um, it's a, it's a, it's a, a great day, um, and we should just do whatever we can to make sure it can, it can work, and then hopefully next year we can get ahead of the ballgame on it.
Right. I have a question. Is the dumpster always located at one hundred Sawyer Street historically?
No, th- it's a new location. Uh, we've, uh, uh, we've had it there two years.
This will be our second year.
Okay, and did you have, other than the tires, any, any issue with unwanted disposal?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
But, uh, but we were surprised last year, uh, why the price got more than the one hundred and eighty-five, as we were just under a ton. And then it turned out that there were six tires.
Okay.
But no mattresses or anything like that, right?
Yeah, or computers.
And I'm only bringing up the other issue because of, uh, sort of a little bit what's going on in that boutique. So it's just something that we we should be aware of, unfortunately.
Right, right. So, so just for everybody who's watching or listening or will watch the replay of this, the, the dumpster is not a public dumpster. It, it's, um, for, for this event only, and it's not for people to bring their own personal things, um, to it. And, um, the quickest way to ruin this event going forward is for people to do that. Um, I would recommend, much like the post-prom party location is kept under wraps until the final minute. Perhaps going forward, the, the dumpster location is kept under wraps until, until the final minute. And Mr. Senior has agreed to, to work with you guys this week to figure out some of these logistical things. And I would recommend you have a volunteer, maybe take a look at the dumpster before it gets picked up. Um, some, somebody with a pickup truck and, um, take out if there's anything that's unwanted. Okay, so.
So I'd like to make a motion that.
Mr. Grady has a question, and I will ask for the motion.
This is for the chief. Chief, do we have cameras over there?
Not yet.
I'm not, I'm not sure if there's anything facing the rear of that building. Uh, but, you know, maybe they can cover when they're done for the day, they can cover the dumpster.
Yeah, just suggestions if you cover it. I mean, maybe just.
Thirty-yard dumpster, so it's pretty big.
I'm just suggesting like the lumber cars, that, maybe, and I'm not saying do it. I just, I don't think people are gonna really go over and use it. All of a sudden, there's a dumpster in an area. I don't think they're gonna do it personally. You know, I don't think you'll see computers and mattresses and, you know, TV screens, um. So I think the, you're pretty, you're probably pretty safe.
Yep. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the Open Space and Recreation Earth Day Cleanup in the town of Cohasset?
So moved.
Saturday, May third, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Chris Plex, aye.
Paul Ready, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Marr, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work.
And thank you for all your good work. And yes, it's very difficult with these things sneaked up.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you have a responsive town government.
Okay. Um, next up is, um, an appointment for an Election Day worker. The application was in our packet for Deanna McFetrich for a two-year term. I don't believe she's here. Um, I think her application is pretty clear cut. Does anybody have any, any questions? She's not online, is she? Kevin, no. I think we can always use good election workers. No questions. So can I have a motion to approve Deanna McFetrich for a two-year term as an election worker?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Chris Plex, aye.
Paul Ready, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Marr, aye. Great. Okay, next up, Safe Harbor Cohasset Coalition, the Youth Ambassador's update. We have a great group. Come on up.
Can we bring chairs if we all stand up here?
Um, you, you can bring chairs to sit. That would be fine. And if you would hold the microphone in front and there's a, a small button here, you press it, it'll, the light should turn green. There we go. So that, um, everybody can hear who's watching at home and here in the audience. So if you could just start, um, from, from you, your name, and you're great.
Um, Cassidy Rocha, tenth grade.
I'm Faisal Rashid, I'm junior.
Maxwell Fernald, I'm a senior.
Dominique Vekiola, I'm a freshman.
Um, and I'm Teiyaki, I'm a senior.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for coming. So you're here to talk about CADCA?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so, slides.
I'm the fourth side, I think.
Okay. I, I guess I could start then, so. Uh, to introduce, so what is CADCA? We're all members, uh, I think for the most, you know, I think all of us here are members of Cohasset's Safe Harbor, Cohasset Safe Harbor's Youth Ambassador Program. And CADCA is a year-long, it is an annual, um, convention held in Washington, D.C. Um, and CADCA stands for the Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America. Um, it is an organization containing various different prevention coalitions across the country. And the goal of CADCA is to strengthen these coalitions through facilitating collaboration and providing trainings to local coalitions, which is what we partook in. Um, and so the CADCA Forum, um, they hold annually, um, in, near Washington, D.C. in Virginia. Um, there are unique opportunities at CADCA, which include attending presentations from world experts in prevention work, um, speaking with legislative staff in Washington, D.C., and meeting other youth from across the country.
Um, are, we had our first meeting with Representative Bill Keating, and we started off by discussing Safe Harbor and like what we do and our, like, goals. And then we highlighted one of the main projects we do, which is Cohasset Minds Matter for the high school and middle school. And then we, um, made sure to highlight how the community has made use of the DFC funding. And then he, Bill Keating's representatives, um, promised further support and continued partnership. And then we had Senator Ed Markey. The entirety of the Massachusetts chapter ended up meeting in the atrium, and he gave a talk just about his values and how he was very passionate about what CADCA was doing and all the Massachusetts coalitions. His support was very promising, and he wanted to continue to advocate for these groups. And then the last one, it went very similar to our first meeting. We met with Elizabeth Warren's aide. And we again talked about startings and progress of the Safe Harbor Coalition. And she, of course, gave support and was very promising in, again, supporting everything that Massachusetts chapters have been doing. And those were just images from all of our meetings.
Yeah, with Ed Markey in the bottom, and we met with, um, Representative Keating in the bottom one as well, so. From our visit.
Right.
Alright, so training sessions were a very large part of, um, like, the forum while we were there. We spent a lot of the time each of the days when we were there, um, attending these. So we basically, we broke up, some of us paired up, um, but we wanted to, you know, maximize the time we had there. So we attended as many training sessions as we could, and Max attended some of the adult sessions as well. So, yeah, they had youth sessions and they also had adult sessions. So, um, two of the training, the youth training sessions that we found to be, uh, the most important were people persuasion, power, unleashing your communication skills, and youth leading change, building partnerships for substance misuse prevention. Um, and I can elaborate on this.
And, uh, as someone who received the, uh, CADCA National Youth Grant, I was able to attend more of these sessions. There were for the Samson National Prevention Day, which, um, was when these guys just came in. And I was able to attend some more of the, some diverse sessions, including the Trainer of Trainer for the Narcan Model, uh, Need Assessment in Resource, uh, Constrained Communities, Grant Writing One-on-One, End Overload Chapters at College campuses, How, um, Coalitions Can Fight the Opioid Epidemic, and Shared Risk Factors Regarding, uh, Adverse Childs Experiences. I took around seventeen notes in this journal, which I hope to transcribe into a little doc, so can you give it to the future generations of Safe Harbor after I graduate?
Right. Do you mind just going back? Of course. Alright, so the first one I mentioned was, uh, mainly focused on logical fallacy combatance. Because, you know, so logical fallacies are, are huge issues that coalitions face when they're, you know, communicating with other organizations, other coalitions, and, you know, other entities in general.
I'm sorry. Can you define what that is? I don't know.
Logical fallacy. Alright, so it's essentially when someone makes an argument that is just incorrect in, in its reasoning. So it basically can like, some examples are, um, when someone attacks their character instead of, you know, actually responding to like a logical question.
Okay.
Just, you know, general defense mechanisms. So logical fallacy combatance, um, is an issue that we face all the time and other coalitions face as well. And, um, the main takeaway from this was, you know, um, you want to identify these when you're talking to people. You know, make it clear that we're not gonna communicate with you if you don't want to communicate with us. Um, and then if things break down, just completely stop communication with said person. And the second one I mentioned was about coalition growth and outreach. So. So coalition, coalition growth and outreach is, you know, a, a, a big thing for every coalition. Because if you don't have, um, a large youth backing, then you don't really have anybody. Um, in our case, we're lucky enough to have a very large youth attendance this year. Um, but in, in this training session, we broke apart into groups and we made posters about what we thought were the, um, the main things that would attract a youth audience. And my group was, um, voted as being the best in the sense that it was the most appealing. And we kinda came to the conclusion that incentivization and being relatable to youth audiences, the best way to sort of attract younger audiences.
So, uh, at the time we spent at CADCA, we were able to connect a large amount of organizations and find a lot of resources we can use in the future. Uh, two of the major ones we found were, um, on the next slide, um, which was Truth Initiative, which is basically all around vaping, nicotine, tobacco, and all that. I believe we already used some of this in the school system, but there are a lot of resources or projects we can do that we can bring into our Safe Harbor, uh, Coalition program. We're looking into that right now. We also have the Ask, Listen, Learn, which is basically how to educate youth around underage drinking. Uh, it just has a bunch of lessons planned, and made videos that appeal to a lot of the younger audience, like middle school kids and elementary school kids. It's gonna be useful if we add to the Dear Hell Healthcare curriculum and other, um, areas around that.
And so additionally, we connected with other coalitions at the conferences. There were hundreds of coalitions there from across the United States, um, which is really interesting in being able to see different perspectives from whether it be Florida or Seattle, or just a lot of different areas that, um, had coalitions working towards the same goals that we were. So I gave a few examples here of some other Massachusetts communities. The next slide. So Eastern Wings of Hope, for instance, um, they focus on Narcan accessibility. Um, and their youth coalition is similar to our organization Cohasset, who incorporate youth who are both in high school and middle school. And then additionally, another example, one of the groups is Close Community, which their coalition works to, um, reduce youth substance use and abuse within Long Meadow. And they base, they're based on community action, um, around youth and wider community collaboration. So those are just some examples of the different coalitions that we were able to socialize with and talk with throughout our time at the conference, um, which really did, I think, inform a lot of our perspectives on different projects and ideas that we could bring into the future, uh, regarding Safe Harbor Youth Ambassadors. So I don't believe Dylan's here, so maybe it was some.
Yeah, I covered slides. So a lot of the strategies we learned was, uh, that we need to train youth in policy applications. We can actually talk to our local representatives and college changers in government. We need to create peer mentorship programs where older students can train younger ones, which we kind of already do with the, like, um, we have a training program at Safe Harbor. Uh, we have to host data collection projects for my youth, uh, to track local substance use trends, which we have done in the past, we haven't done, uh, in a bit. We can organize culturally inclusive events that reach different parts of the community in order to, uh, expand our reach. Part with other youth coalitions to actually share ideas and strategies, which we kind of do assist in it in the skunk program. We can run media campaigns, uh, to, again, have a larger outreach and offer leadership, uh, development workshops to build public speaking organization outreach skills, to, you know, better educate our youth and allow them to move, um, on after our program.
I think that's all.
Next slide. Great. Great. Um, Mr. Flex, comments, questions?
This is great. Glad you're bringing all this insight back into Cohasset. That's a great program. I'm glad you guys are the energy behind it.
Mr. Grady?
Great program, great job, you guys.
Mr. Creighton?
Well done. I know sometimes it's very difficult in high school, middle school, with someone, your fellow students might have questionable behavior. And there's a lot of peer pressure. And just your ambassadors, and as an ambassador, you're a role model. And you allow the other kids who kind of might not wanna, you know, be on your side. When you stand forward, it makes it easier for them. So that takes a lot of courage, and thank you, and I congratulate each and every one of you on your personal courage. Thank you.
Mr. Frog?
Uh, great job and just keep doing what you're doing, doing. Uh, it's very important for the town of Cohasset and all of the kids in the town, uh, the work that you're doing. And as a select board, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo Mr. Frog's comments. We do appreciate it, and anything we can do, you know, to support you, encourage you to get your message out. I was just thinking, call the anchor, um, Carol Meyer, have, have her, you know, talk to you guys and get it out beyond just us, but really to the community at large would be great. Um, what a great experience. I, I wish there were these experiences, you know, when, when we were younger and people might have made different choices had, had they had this knowledge and, um, and experience. Um, do you have another trip planned soon?
I think we're planning on going, or like, me and Iden and Barb are gonna graduate, but I think we have, all the other ambassadors are planning on having another trip next year to the next CADCA event.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, we would look forward to hearing all about it. Ms. Balashi, you don't need to vote or anything. This is just a presentation, correct?
Updating on their whole curriculum of bringing back classes.
Okay. And so the, the coalition has plans for around prom time to do the, the stickers on. The sticker shock, yeah?
November.
Oh, okay.
I know they had conversations about doing it around prom.
Yep.
Um, but they're still in the works. But otherwise, their main target right now is Cohasset Minds Matter.
Okay. May twenty-second. Great, great. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh. Can you, can you leave one chair? Thank you, Mr. Senior. Okay, uh, next up, um, is our annual town meeting section, and, uh, we have Article eighteen, the citizens' petition. Do we have anyone from the citizen, oh, okay, come on up. Name and address, please.
I'm John Orm, twenty-sixth Lambert Lane.
Okay, thank you. So, um, do you wanna tell us a little bit about your petition? I mean, we got your materials and, and the, the letter that was sent to the sewer commission last fall and the drawings and all of that. But why don't you just kind of in a nutshell, explain to us what your petition is all about?
Well, um, it's just basically to connect to Hingham Sewer, and Hingham already approved it. So it's just a matter of running lines on my property, um, ten foot, uh, maybe ten foot of Cohasset property in the sewers, uh, Hingham Sewer line. And that really, that's really it. I mean, it, it basically, Hingham already has approved the commission, the connection. And, um, we have septic's already designed and ready to go, but we think it's better for the environment and better for the new residents and better for the neighbors to connect to sewer if we can. So fundamentally, I mean, if Hingham allowed us to connect to their sewer, and, um, it's better for the environment, and it just makes sense to kind of connect to the sewer.
Okay.
And that was, I, I, I kind of like, it, it's all explained in the email that we sent as well. That's really it.
Okay. So, Mr. Senior, forgive me, I'm a little confused if it's a connection to Hingham.
Well, it's actually in Cohasset, at the properties of Cohasset.
Okay.
Um, the pipe that runs down Hol Street is, is Hingham.
Yeah.
But it's, we use it, um, it's, it's part of an inter municipal agreement. The parcel that Mr. Orman, parcels that Mr. Orman, uh, one which has been spun to two, there are two that are suspended. Two of them are in the district, the northwestern district, because they have a little piece attached to Hol Street, but two are not.
Okay.
And they're all managed, so two of them are not in the district. So, so, um, regardless of their ability to connect to Hingham, if, if petition isn't approved, they cannot be attached. The, the, the two parcels that are not in the district cannot be attached to sewer. They have to be attached.
Okay, okay. So, okay, so it's not, it's not really, it's connecting to Hingham and, and that's it. It's kind of.
Correct. The sewer district, it's, it's, it's in Cohasset, so it's, it's in the, the north Cohasset sewer territory.
Yeah, so that, in two thousand eight, there was a transaction that made that parcel one complete tax lot. And in two thousand fourteen, when they drove the sewer districts, they used a two thousand and two plan. So technically, they didn't use the right plan when they designed the sewer districts in two thousand and fourteen. So technically, that whole tax parcel was one parcel and should have all been included in the sewer district. Because there was two lots within the tax parcel, it's under the opinion of, uh, Christopher Senior that it, it was two parcels, but it really isn't. But we went through the process because the sewer commission told us to kind of go through and, and kind of submit this petition, that it's the right way to get this approved. And I met with Chris Senior about three months ago, and he said, go, go through the process because it's easier for you. But if, if I go to court, or if I, you know, if I go to Superior Court, if I go to the Attorney General's Office, they would probably, probably overrule and correct the mistakes that were made in two thousand and fourteen using the wrong sewer plan. It's pretty clear. But I, you know, I, I just want this, you know, it, it makes sense to do sewer anyway, if I'm gonna do septic, right? Because I can build a septic. Why not just connect to the sewer? It's Hingham Sewer, they approved it. We have to go two hundred feet, uh, but not even like ten feet, because it's, it's basically my land, uh, that is a budding Hol Street. And then ten feet of that, it goes into, you're right into Hingham. So we're going through ten feet of Cohasset land. It's no overburden on Cohasset Sewer because it's the North Sewer District. The capacity basically is regulated by Hingham, and they agree to it. So there's no fundamental reason why anybody would try to stop this, unless they're trying to stop the building or make it harder for me to build. And we have this ability to do septic anyway, so why not just approve the connection? Because it'll generate more revenue for the sewer commission in Cohasset, because we're gonna be paying forty-five thousand connection, twenty percent of which will go back to Cohasset for infrastructure. And then the ongoing fees are twenty percent of those monthly sewer, yearly sewer fees. So it just, it's just common sense to connect to, allow this, yeah, so that's, that's all.
Telling us what we should be doing?
No, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying, I didn't say, I didn't tell anybody.
Just wanna be clear on that.
Okay.
Because I've heard of this parcel. I'm gonna be honest with you.
Okay.
Alright, it's been convoluted, mixed up, things have gone on up there for years that shouldn't have gone on. I'm just gonna be honest with you. Alright, uh, as far as blasting, ledge removal, clear cutting. Alright, so you, you've been on a mission. You're making it sound like you're full of altruism, that it's good for the community, good for Lambert's Lane, good for everybody else. Why don't you just come out and just say it's good for you? You wanna build whatever you wanna build. But those, but please do, do me a favor. Don't come before the board and tell them what they should do. I don't appreciate.
I don't think I told you. I just said, I just pointed out the objective.
Threat in court, you know, if I go to court, they're gonna overrule the mistakes made, right? That doesn't bode too well. So let me be quite frank with you. Um, I don't like it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm from the computer world. I just kind of state facts. I'm sorry.
You don't state facts. You're saying that if you go to court, they're gonna overrule it. You don't wanna go to the AG, but you will go to the AG. It's a failed threat.
I'm not.
So I would encourage you to probably do that, and I'm speaking singly.
Okay. So be it. I mean, that's fine.
How big is this parcel?
It's smaller, fifteen, eighteen thousand square foot lots.
Alright, so you're not doing it so you could do a subdivision and.
No. It's very small.
And did you ever engage in any blasting for?
I had the permit, so I, basically the Conservation Commission told me that, that they wanted me to blast instead of chip away. So, um, the blasting company went and got the permit from the fire department, and the fire department basically said, okay. And then, um, and then they came back and stopped it afterwards. So we went through all the proper procedures for, uh, for the blasting. And we didn't just randomly blast because we followed all the proper procedures. This, uh, the blasting companies have to follow the procedures, um, because, um, it's the law, basically, and, and they did. And that's sort of part, uh, the fire department gave them the, you know, connect, uh, the ability to blast, so that, that's what happened there. And we only blasted a small area because we were trying to level it out so I could park my car to the left side of my house instead of parking in front of my house, because I live there right now.
Why did they, fire department then come in and revoke or take verse?
Because the building inspector said that we're blasting too deep. Uh, so the building inspector overrode the fire department, which.
If you had a legitimate permit to do it and the building inspector, why didn't you go to the building inspector first?
Uh, because I, I followed the blasting company, working with the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission was running that permit. It was a Conservation Commission permit.
Well, there's separate things. That's a, uh, order of condi- conditions. So, um, and I don't, I haven't really followed that. I'm just trying to, um, determine whether at any point that you circumvented, you know, the proper procedures, um, and then the building department became involved after the fire department said you could go ahead. And then you stopped it all, so you're, so now you, you just wanna, don't do anything more there, just connect the sewer and that's it.
We're gonna, yeah, correct. We're just, we're gonna build houses and connect the sewer.
One house?
Yeah. There, there's a total of four houses in the project on the block. It's a two-acre lot. And we subdivided it into four pieces.
Okay, so you need the sewer connection to do your subdivision.
No, we don't. We can use septic.
You just prefer to use.
I prefer to use the sewer.
Well, I understand that. I know it's a little bit about that. I've been, perfectly in the, in the business, always better if you can get the municipal sewer rather than septic system. So kind of what's driving it is the ability to more effectively do a four-unit subdivision.
Correct. Uh, the, the sewer commission already approved two sewer connections. We have two other houses that were approved for A and R lots by the planning board.
Okay.
And by the Conservation Commission, yeah.
Planning board has approved your subdivision.
Correct, yeah. So instead of using septic, we can now use sewer.
So two are sewered and you're looking for two more, the, the other two to be sewer?
Yeah, correct. For sewer instead of having septic.
Okay.
And, uh, that's really it. And, you know, I, granted, there are some opinions on what happened in the past. I'm sorry if I offended anybody, but, you know, hey, I had a permit when I did all that work. I had the permit from the Conservation Commission to clear that land and blast that ledge. And, and I, I don't wanna hurt, I'm just trying to get a sewer connection here. I, I'm not trying to offend anybody, tell anybody what to do. I just think it makes sense. And that's all I've been, that's what, you know, I'm doing here today, just trying to point out the reasons why it makes sense to make a sewer connection, and that's it.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, Mr. Senior, in, um, Appendix B, the draft from the, in, in the warrant, I assume that this is your parcel?
Yes, correct.
That's dark, and it's, it's this narrow section that you're looking to have sewered?
Yeah, just the, the right side, the right side of it. There's a, there's another plan there that highlights the actual sewer district.
Okay. This one?
Um, it's not on there, yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Senior, my, my question to you is, as we look at this map, right, where does the North Cohasset Sewer District start and, and, well, where, where does it end relative to this?
It, 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 it only connects parcels that, just to Hol Street. There's nothing on Lambert's Lane. This is the only, because it hasn't, again, when it was created, the map wasn't mapped by me.
Yep, yep, understood.
Because this has a, that, that little tonne land of four-foot strip that attaches to Hol, the parcel, again, this was roughly two lots, not one. The, the, the parcel closest to Hol Street was considered part of the district. It wasn't connected to sewer, but it was considered part of the district. The part, if you want to look on the right side, that lot was not included in the sewer district. It was because there were only five of them on Lambert's.
Okay.
But since then, Mr. Orman's gone through a, a process to do the A and R and combine lots and all of that. Uh, but at the time of district mapping, that's not what was there. It was a house on that other block that's not there.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Flex, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, there's an email on the packet from Carol Rowe explaining about Sewer Commission made a motion, non-support for expanding the sewer district to include thirty to thirty-two Lambert's Lane. Does that mean not adding it to Cohasset's sewerage?
Right, that would, they voted not to support this addition of the district.
To Cohasset or to?
Well, to Cohasset, means it can't be connected to anything.
To anything, correct. And do we understand the Sewer Commission's rationale for that?
They, they were preparing minutes. They had, they did have a public hearing. They heard testimony, um.
Yeah, we had specifically asked them the reason why they didn't allow the connection, and they couldn't give us an answer during the hearing. Because it, yeah, and so we didn't get an answer for that, and that, that's what's interesting about this.
Or any of it means if, if, unless the Sewer Commission wants to support it, how many needs a two-thirds vote to support it in addition to the sewer?
I just don't, I'm, I'm trying to get my head around why the Cohasset Sewer Commission would effectively oppose.
Well, I don't think they've ever supported, at least at the time of that, they've never supported an extension of the district.
But that, if I understand the way it's being presented, this is a, a non-issue. It's de minimis, it's no effort on the part of Cohasset to support.
I can't speak to the Sewer Commission's.
And I'm putting you in an awkward.
No.
I apologize. It's just that what we have from the Sewer Commission is a sentence.
Right.
They did have a public hearing. I, I don't, during their minutes, I don't know.
Okay.
So, you know, my, my concern is always unintended consequences, and we have, and I'm probably gonna say this in. And I'm probably gonna say this incorrectly because it's one or the other, forty percent of. Only forty percent of the town is sewored. Right, and so what Pandora's box this opened, not only in North Cohasset, you know, maybe to corner lots, maybe, maybe to this lot number thirteen that. Gets an easement from the house on Hull Street to to connect to the sewer, what happens to other, other. Areas in town where someone says, oh, I, I might be able to connect. And, but you let, you let it happen here, but you're not gonna let it happen there, and. The sewer mapping. To the best of my recollection has been a, was a very arduous process. Right, and and meticulously laid out based on our capacity and, um. You know. The de minimis impact, you know, to use Mr. Plex's word. Yeah, what, what's, what's two more houses, that's not my concern, my concern is really the bigger picture and, and. What may happen, do we get a citizen's petition at every town meeting? To, can I connect here, can I connect there?
There's been several in passing. None of which have been passed.
Yeah.
That said, it's, he's following the process and he can ask.
Yep.
So he's, he's, he's following his rights as a citizen, he's doing, you know.
Yeah.
As a follow-up to that, um, Hingham offered. To connect all the neighbors in the area because they had enough capacity and from an infrastructure standpoint, wouldn't it be the best interest of a community to. Facilitate the connections of sewer in the North District, if there's capacity to do that.
If I may just be clear, Hingham has no capacity, it's, it's all goes to Hull.
Oh, yeah.
So Hingham's pipe connects to Hull, so this all goes through to Hull. I mean, it does connect to Hingham, but even Hingham is sending that area to Hull.
To Hull, yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, but Hingham told me in the meeting, the hearing, and you can look it up, it's online, they said, hey, we have a lot of connections you can have over there. We can connect more people, wouldn't that be in the best interest of everybody in Cohasset, more people around sewer? Instead of trying to stop it, set a precedent that you can't connect to a sewer, why not innovate and design a sewer system that can. Connect everybody in Cohasset?
Starting with you.
Well.
Not with me, with everybody, it's not really about me, it's about just making a connection somewhere where there's a connection available right now.
Well, I think the, uh, Chairman had a very salient point, having spent many years on, uh. Conservation and stormwater and. And be very familiar with, um, development and the impact of development, the impact of, um, development is not just solely for, for the sewer. Um. I don't think we wanna open this door. Because. Um, Chairman Maher is very correct, there are unintended consequences, there are. You may inadvertently, and this has had nothing to do with you, it's meant inadvertently opening up the doors of precedent. Which would be used by less desirable, um, development entities. Um, and we have learned painfully through. The only way to preserve Cohasset as we cherish it is, is to be vigilant. About all of the various rules and regulations, and yes. I can see some attraction in, in what you're saying, but the overall is we're setting a very, very dangerous precedent. Which goes right to the heart of preserving, um, Cohasset, so. I'm a free market kinda guy, but. This is when. I, I would really not support what you're doing.
Mister, Mister Farag, set his hand up.
Oh, great, thank you, um, but there's a lot to unpack here because there's a lot been said, uh, and Chris, uh, Senior, if you can correct me, i- if I'm wrong in anything, because. The North Cohasset Sewer District goes to Hull. And the reason he would be here in front of us is to expand that sewer district, uh, to that portion of Lambert's Lane. The only reason that Hingham is being talked about because we either share the pipe with them or what have you, uh, in order to. Uh, get it down there and then, then they have their residents on the other side go, go to Hull, so when Hingham is saying to you that they have capacity. You're not going to them for the connection, you have to go to Cohasset because your property is on the Cohasset side, so, uh. It, so, and then you'd be going through the sewer commission, which is what you did, I would be interested to see, you know, what the sewer commission said. Um, regarding why they would, you know, not want a connection, I, I believe we have extended the sewer district on a couple of occasions, like to, you know, stop and shop and the, um. Uh, the, um, what's, what's the one on the hill there, the, uh, the Cook Estates, I believe, was, was one that we extended the district, but, uh, generally. Um, unless it's part of a major plan, we don't extend the sewer district for, uh, for, for too many things, but the question I have, uh, for, for the gentleman is, is that. Are you saying that when they created the Cohasset Sewer District for North Cohasset, there was somehow a mistake made with this property, is that what you're, you're, you're saying? And, 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 and I'm trying to understand, what proof do you have to, to, to show that? That there was, because, because I mean, the, the district down in that end, it, to my knowledge, it was never intended to have anything on Lambert's Lane, I mean, on, on, not Lambert's Lane, um. Uh, you know, that, that area there, but go ahead, please. Tell me what you're.
Yeah, so I submitted a letter that I submitted to the sewer commission that basically outlined that in two thousand eight, there's a transaction between. Uh, twenty-two Lambert's Lane and twenty-six Lambert's Lane, where a piece of the parcel was sold. To enable, uh, twenty-two Lambert's Lane to rebuild a house, a two-family house. Um, there. And have the proper setbacks, when that occurred. The planning board approved it, but at that point, the parcel rolled itself into one entity, because in order for twenty-six Lambert's Lane to be conforming. It would have had to have certain setbacks, so when you do that, you have to merge, they would have had to merge the two properties into one. And for some reason, that was never done. And it should have been done, but basically twenty-six Lambert's Lane was one parcel. That basically, um. In two thousand eight was one tax parcel and sewer districts are usually set up by tax parcels, not sub-parcels within a tax parcel. And in this particular case, it's very clear that you can look at the sewer district that was planned, that was used in two thousand fourteen and they used a two thousand and two plan. So they used an incorrect plan. When they determined if twenty-six Lambert's Lane should be in this sewer district or not, so what they did is, in two thousand fourteen, they said, okay. We're gonna let half of twenty-six Lambert's Lane to be in the sewer district, not the whole thing. Which is, normally you don't do that to begin with. You usually either, you're in or you're out, and that's it, it's not half, okay, we're gonna let half of your house be in the sewer district, but not, not the other half. And that's kind of the situation we have here. And it's clear from the records, if you look back on the records and stuff, and, and, you know, hey, I went through the process here, we, we could have followed another process. Trying to be open, it's only a sewer connection, I don't think we're, we're setting a precedent or anything like that with anybody, um. And it, this is what it is, you know, it's, it's either we use septic or we go to sewer. And that's what it really comes down to.
And just for the record, with respect to Mr. Armstrong's position, uh, select for our. Council looked at, our council, the materials, it does not agree with Mr. Armstrong's position, there were two parcels. Uh, and one was included, because there were two parcels, the one that, the one that attached to Hull Street was included. The one that was just on Lambert's Lane was not, so I.
Yeah, but. So, so with David paying taxes.
Our council looked at it and did not agree with Mr. Armstrong's position, just to be clear, so.
Okay.
I'm not.
Thank you for that, Mr. Grady.
Um, now, is there still DEP order conditions up there as well?
Pardon me?
DEP signs.
Yes.
All right. And as far as septic. That's all, a lot of ledge up there.
Correct, there is.
And they said, septic, to the best of my knowledge, is, uh, underground, where would it go?
The septic would, you need four foot of naturally occurring soil and we have four areas where there's naturally occurring soil.
That's all guaranteed.
Yeah, it's good, we dug so many test pits for the stormwater, we know exactly where it's gonna go.
What does DEP have to say about this, why is it still under a?
DEP required, we needed a stormwater permit and we needed a, um, notice of intent permit to clean the debris that was there on, there was a dumping. Lots three and four, we needed to clean that out, so we needed to work with the DEP to get that done.
And how's that going along?
Pretty good, it, we, it passed through and we're cleaning it up and, you know, we're moving forward.
Okay, um.
I do agree with the chair, I'm sorry. I do agree with the chair, the ancillary effects and the, the, uh. Of the situation coming down the road. As I said, when you came in, it was sounding like altruism. Like all Lambert's, Lambert's up until recently, if I'm not mistaken, Chris, was deemed a private way. So, is that all Lambert's, I know that they had a thing over the repaving and stuff like that.
So, so Lambert's Lane was determined to be a public way up to the golf.
Up to the golf course, so, um.
There's not much more after that.
No, there's not much more to that.
It's all the way.
But it does go around, um.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it's a public way, that means that you have the right to build on a public way. All right, you, you confirm that?
I'm not seeing this.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so my, so I'd like to get a sense of the board, we, we have, we have two options, we can take a vote on this now, or we can defer a vote till. Next Tuesday's meeting when we can get some, uh, feedback and input from the sewer commission. Um, more so than their one line on their, on their email, um. Whether or not it would make a difference, I, I will leave it up to my colleagues. So do I, is there a sense of the board?
I'm, I'm wanting to vote now.
I'm comfortable voting now.
Okay. Everyone's comfortable voting?
Yeah.
Yes, ba- based upon the, um. What the town manager said from town council, yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, um. Do I make a motion? In the. Okay. So the warrant says recommendation at annual town meeting, okay, but we can just relay our vote at that?
It'll be in the motions.
It'll be, it'll be in the motions, okay, so Article eighteen, a citizen's petition expanded the sewer district, um. To. Thirty, commonly, the, the lot commonly known as thirty and thirty-two Lambert's Lane, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to make recommendation to town meeting? Um, to support the citizen's petition?
So moved, unless you want my answer.
So you're, you're moving to support the citizen's petition?
I move to ma- make a motion, you mean?
Yeah, but you're not, you don't wanna support it, you wanna.
No, I, I wanna, I wanna oppose, I make a motion, opposed.
Okay, so I asked for a motion to make recommendation.
To make recommendations.
To support. The citizen's petition, and so we don't have a motion. To support.
Oh.
The citizen's petition with a recommendation at town meeting. All right, so can I have a motion to recommend to annual town meeting? Um, not in support of the citizen's petition, Article eighteen.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Adam, sure, if we could clarify before we vote.
Yes.
Voting an aye on the motion is against the expansion of the sewer district, correct?
Voting aye on the, yes. Yes.
Chris Plex, aye.
All ready, aye.
Jack, great, aye.
David Frug, aye.
Ellen Maher, aye. So we'll see you, if this still goes before town meeting?
Yeah, that's fine, so sixty-six percent. Okay. All right, if we get sixty percent, sixty-six percent of the.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, so if two-thirds of the town agrees to the sewer connection.
I'm beginning to think so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Cover ready.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Okay. Stacy, did you get my? Second motion that was made and seconded, okay, thank you. Okay, um. Chris, what would be the best source to go look for? Other than going through meeting minutes of the sewer commission of similar situations?
Um. The last, in the last ten town meetings, I'm aware of it, it was two petitions.
Okay.
Um, may have some history, one was on King Street for sure, and I think those were each one.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Other than, I didn't write this off, but there's a. The Board of Health, there's an open permit, they need to have it cleaned up on the site, and I'm not sure if that's been closed, but, uh, uh, two weeks ago, they've not been. Checked, so that has, that has been closed, this couldn't be acted on, any, I don't think.
Okay, if it's not closed by town meeting, okay.
But I, you know, I don't check.
Talking about the DEP thing, right?
Yeah, no, it's, it's DEP and the, what the Health has control, pieces of justice. Have to deal with the cleanup.
Okay. All right, so next up, um, is, is the town warrant and, um, we do have another meeting next week, which we can continue this. This topic as well, um. And this is really to, to talk about. Uh, any conversation or any, um. Any speaking role that any of us, sorry, my brain has slowed down, any speaking role that any of us would like to partake in. During town meeting, um. Chris is usually nothing for Article. One, two, or three at this point.
Probably just four.
Just four, okay.
Five. And then, um. Perhaps on the Capitol piece, town meeting, uh, town hall.
Okay, so, um, for, for town hall, because the, the repairs and renovations to town hall appear in three articles, the creation of. Or, or the seeking approval from the town to approve, to allow the select board to enter negotiations. For the historic section, the capital budget allocation and the, uh, community preservation allocation, and so the working group. Talked about how we socialize this, or does, does someone from each group get up for each article and talk about it? And, um, our, our thought is with Kevin's valuable assistance is we do a brief. Video before the first article to explain. The components of all three articles, instead of getting up and talking about each one, um, and we would have someone from the cultural. Uh, committee, uh, cultural. Center speak. The nonprofit speak, we would have, um. Uh, someone from Capitol speak. One or both of us who've been on, working on this would speak, maybe open and then close the video, two to three minutes top, so it's not gonna be lengthy, but at least it gets. The message out there one time, I think it would be kind of, um. My opinion is, it would, it would be a lot of up and down. Over three articles. For all of us to speak. Is that, um. Does that meet with approval from everyone on the select board?
So you would have. Just a kind of a presentation to cover all three.
Correct.
You know, anchored by the. Uh, video or whatever it is, and the people, like, I think that's the easiest way to.
Okay.
Do it, I'm not, I'm not hearing any great opposition around town to it. Does anybody expect some kind of a floor fight?
Never say never.
I know, but I'm saying I haven't heard it.
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah, I think that's a great way to do it, and then you can take any other questions as they come.
Right.
Um, but I would try and make sure that in, in the video package that you try and answer as many of the questions that people can have as possible, and then it just, you know, it just pulls that. That out, so you don't have to go up and, and make a statement on it afterwards.
Right, right, and, um, and speaking with Kevin, be- before our meeting tonight, it's going to be voiceover. Of the selected speakers with video and still photography of the town hall, Kevin said he has enough for two to three minutes, maybe, so, um.
Yeah.
No one has to be on camera, yeah.
I want.
Except for Paul, because he wants to be, so, um. So that out of the way. So we don't have to worry about those articles, uh, creation of the enterprise fund for the recycling transfer facility, um. Mr. Senior, I'm sure you will speak to it, does anyone on the select board wish to get up and talk about it?
I'm happy to about that, because I'm fully in support of it. As far as, so, I mean, I, unless you want to. I'd be happy to say something if people ask questions.
Okay.
My concern is that we ought to clarify something to avoid divisive. Floor fight about what the fees are actually going to be and. Uh, things like that and the impact on seniors. Um, I don't. I think the first thing that we wanna do is get the enterprise zone set up. And I think we should emphasize in the presentation. That this is to set it up, that it makes a lot of sense to set it up. But we are not establishing what any fee schedule may or may not be. Um. And otherwise, we, we run into a very long and extensive, the potential. Very long and extensive. Discussion about. What the fees are gonna be, they're not fair, et cetera, and so on, we could be there for a long time. I think if we, we wanna emphasize that the purpose of this. Is a good government, very basic streamlining of, of something, that's all this is.
Right, we, well, the select board hasn't voted. On, on any fees or any of the other operational components, so, um, so Mr. Grady has volunteered to speak on this unless some.
Also good at it, too.
What?
Want to speak, this is very good numbers. Oh, I was volunteering, but I can also put you right with that.
What is, what is, what is the desire of the board?
I would let the chair speak and the vice would back her up if you just to get some.
Okay, okay, in the interest of time. I will speak to that. Article five is the operating budget. Again, Mr. Senior will present it. Typically, um, someone speaks to it?
Simply said, the board deliberated and supports it, just, you know, because it's the biggest amount of money that's spent. Some member of the board said it had to be debated, and we discussed it thoroughly.
Well, I kind of like this one, I don't mind speaking of this, we'll vote to fix salaries in compensation of elected officers, I can dig that. I'll speak to that.
Okay, so the budget will be Mr. Brady. We, you were teasing?
Yeah, this select board member wants them, they need dollars.
Okay, unpaid bills, there aren't any supplemental appropriations. You know, I think the only one that might cause questions is the schools at six hundred and fifty, even though we hope that it's not going to be that much. We met with Chris and I met with Superintendent Shannon and Mr. McClellan, the current chair of the school committee yesterday, to prep them for this meeting and the types of questions that they should be prepared to answer, this being one of them. You know, why do the schools need six hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now? I don't know if we need to speak to it. Unless somebody wants to. No, okay, Article eight, sta- because we have to, um, we're meeting with Dan Evans, the moderator tomorrow, to outline our, um, the, the pre-meeting is tomorrow, so we kind of let him know who's speaking on which articles and who's not speaking, and who's available for questions. Article eight stabilization and other special funds. Sure, Mr. Davis will get up and, and speak about the current state of PEB.
I'll do it at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, he'll do it at the beginning, he won't, okay, he won't wait, okay. The transfer of funds to capital stabilization. Chris, if you just mentioned that this is in line with our financial goals of increasing it, you know, as opposed to, it's been flatlined for several years, um, then I don't think we need to speak to it, but anyone's welcome to.
I may, um, I, I may speak to it, and that if it, depending what the board thinks, sometimes it's helpful for people to understand what a great fiscal uh, tool this is. That it allows us to set aside money that we're going to need in the future, shows, uh, proper budgeting and, and all that, so I don't know, I.
The stabilization funds?
Yes.
Okay, because the next article, we spend the money. Capital improvement, so typically, somebody from Capitol will get up and speak on these, again, the schools are prepared to answer any school questions if necessary. In our video, I would plan to talk about number twenty-six, whether it's Mr. Grady or myself, or it could be someone from Capitol, Mark Cameron, talk about the three point nine million for town hall, and how that will be bonded in FY twenty-seven as, as debt rolls off, so, um, it's no increase to the taxpayer. Anyone want to speak to Capitol? In general?
I mean, Cap- Capitol will speak.
Ca- Capitol will speak to it, I'm just asking if the select board has any interest in speaking to any.
The Capitol part?
Yeah.
I would just get with them, or I'll let them do it.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Um, Article ten, allocation of funds for one-time costs. Again, um, Mr. Senior typically presents this. Um, is there any interest in, uh, or desire of anyone to speak to it?
I think Chris is covered there.
Okay, Article eleven, uh, this is a, an annual, um, article, there's no change, I don't think we need to speak to it. And also the moderator, when he presents and asks for the motion, he also indicates the votes so that the audience is aware, even though they're in the motions, he, he articulates them. Article twelve, thirteen are perfunctory annual, um, articles that we do. Article fourteen CPC. Again, town hall is in here. We'll address it in the video.
I would definitely help on CPC, because the other, the other portion is, is the, um, the conservation restriction is, as well, that's another one, big ticket item there.
Actually, that's a good idea, David, he's on CPC now, speak to the town hall and the other, because that's
Okay, so, so David, you want to speak to this article?
Yes, yeah, I mean, are they going to break it up and vote for each one individually, or they, are they going to?
It's voted as a block.
It's voted as a block, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I could speak to it, and I think the big ones are going to get, get the most, uh, interest, but.
Okay.
And that's town hall and the conservation restriction, tho- those are the two that I think are going to, the, the other ones I think are more perfunctory.
Okay, so we'll put you there, Article fifteen is going to be deferred. Article sixteen, lease portion of town hall. Again, this is only to allow the select board to enter into negotiations of a lease for the historic part of town hall, and not the terms and conditions of the lease.
Question that, would Glenn, perhaps someone be getting up to speak to that, or is this going to be our board or?
I think Glenn should speak, somewhere, however we do it.
He probably will stand up, but he's not, I'm not thinking, I don't disagree.
The thing is, is with, with the lease, y- we have to let people know that it just authorized the select board to enter into negotiations, you know? Because people always worry about, well, is it going to be a twenty-year, thirty-year, you know, all of the, the machinations of it, but it's just authorizing the board, and then after that, we can, you know, get into it, but sometimes people want to have it all signed, sealed, delivered on the floor of town meeting, but that doesn't happen with those kind of articles, so.
Right.
Isn't it better to have Glenn do it from the floor? Optically? Speak in favor of it from the floor?
Well, he, he certainly can stand up and speak in favor of it, as, as can any member of the Cohasset Cultural Committee, we're asking town meeting floor to allow us at the table to negotiate a lease with, um, a nonprofit, so I, I think.
I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, I don't think, I don't think it's, I think it's going to go right through, to be honest with you.
I think it is too, but if, if Glenn might be, if it starts getting there, having Glenn prepared to, uh, speak to it, because he has tremendous amount of influence, and he does represent the constituency that after all, did kind of push this through to fruition, so. But y- y- you're right, Alan, that the, it, what we're voting on is authorizing the select board to do the negotiations, but the whole concept is likely to come up, so we should be prepared.
Alright, so I'll reach out to Glenn to see if, if he wants to speak to it as well, um. You know, perhaps a select board member introduces this.
Yeah, I would recommend that you consider that, because you're getting the authority to do it, and you've already shown the video, so it would be just, you know, I said in the video.
And, and it's the fi- final article, yeah. I, I don't know, Mr. Flex over there is quite quiet.
Keep my head down.
Oh, we got tennis courts coming up, too.
Okay, Chris, can I ask Chris a question?
Yeah.
Chris, Article fifteen.
So I was going to talk about that in my book. Simply saying, um, so we have ongoing negotiations with the class of fire. And, uh, much like, we were successfully, we've already supposedly done with the police department, we're hoping to successfully, you know, the fire union, we're just not there yet. So, uh, uh, we hopefully will get there, uh, and we hope this will be on a future warrant, but we're not going to yet, so, uh, so this is a recommendation, it's definitely postponed, it's on town meeting floor. On the record.
Okay. Alright, so I'm going to let Article sixteen, I'm going to let, um, Mr. Grady and Mr. Flex find it out.
Mr. Flex wants to speak.
Mr. Mr. Flex can do it.
I'm happy to, if that would please the board.
Please the chair. No offense. What did she say? Okay, Article seventeen, amendments to Article nine point four flood plain, uh, this is just housekeeping from a previously approved article, I don't think that unless somebody would like to speak on it, I personally do not want to.
No, I'll pass on it.
Okay, and then Article eighteen, the citizen's petition to expand the sewer district that we just voted not to recommend.
You're going to get probably a lot of, uh, people, um. Why take that one?
In support or against?
Let's see, Chris, I'll take this, you know, depending what shows up, but I do know, you know, from, uh, you know, I'm planning, that's caused, that's caused quite a bit of angst, so.
We, I mean, we don't have to speak on it.
I don't know if we need to.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, I really don't, like, you know, I don't want to show favor, which isn't one where they are.
Okay.
Would we consider having someone from the sewer commission speak to it?
That might be a good idea.
Yeah. Can you reach out to Bill or Paul?
I think that's really the root of the issue.
It's real.
Okay, so, um, we, we have, we're not, we only have four articles that, uh, we are speaking to, available for questions, um, and we have another meeting next week, if there's a change of heart or second thoughts, we still have time to make those changes next Tuesday. Okay, any other comments or questions on the warrant? No. Okay, tennis court project update. And I apologize, we are behind schedule. Mr. Senior, is Michelle on?
Yeah, she's doing.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
Sorry, we're, we're behind schedule.
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to provide a quick update tonight on the tennis court project and the progress that we're making. I sent around a memo April fourteenth outlining the steps we were taking, um, towards completing the tennis courts. Um, there's been a lot of chatter out there, and I just want to provide as many facts as I can about the tennis courts. The tennis court project started, um, last July. And we've, we've hit some roadblocks with weather and things of that nature, however, we, we kept moving forward. We poured the tennis courts, the initial pour was before Thanksgiving. Um, the second pour was, um, the first week in December, um, the courts were then tensioned, and they started the curing process. Um, during the second pour, the weather was not as anticipated. There was an all-day mist, which is not what we, i- it's not what Mother Nature had promised for that day, but they kept moving forward. So we allowed the courts to cure for the twenty-eight days. And then once the weather broke, um, we started preparing the courts for the spring league play. Um, on March twenty-third, um, in effort to prepare the courts, we started shot blasting them, and what that is, it's it's removing the top layer of debris from the courts to prepare them for final surfacing. During that, um, the contractor noticed that there was some spalling happening on the courts. Um, and the spalling is simply flaking of the top layer of the courts. We were notified immediately that this had happened, um, and we started moving forward to corrective actions. Things that we did is we had a structural engineer on site, um, Rad's structural engineer was on site. Um, we also hired our own structural engineer to make sure the town, um, best interests were taken care of. The structural engineer for Rad performed an entire report, they came out and said they believed that grinding, the top layer to remove that spalling would prepare the cer- the court surfaces for final surfacing. We weren't entirely comfortable with that, so we hired SGH. Um, I will tell you that Rad is paying for SGH's services on behalf of the town. Um, SGH has come out, and they did a visual inspection of the court last Friday. Also, that grinding, they, they had a test strip, um, they performed the grinding on a test strip of Court Three um, with SGH present to see if it removed the spalling and got them to the surface that they had anticipated. It appears that it, it has done that. However, we reserve the right to still wait for SGH to conduct their report, so we have a final report for the town. SGH is in the process right now of reviewing all specifications, the QC reports, the thermal records, all submittals, and the field reports. And this is something they do before they give us a final recommendation, and even before they go to coring the courts. Um, if they review all of these submittals, and they find that the courts are structurally sound, they will not move towards coring the courts, and we will proceed with the grinding as suggested by the contractor, and then move to final surfacing. We are not, um, going to perform any additional testing on the courts until the end of the season, which I believe is May nineteenth, based on all the schedules. The varsity, junior varsity boys and girls teams have been playing out there. Um, they're playing on all courts with the exception of Court Three, um, it is safe for play. Um, they're temporarily striped to make sure we can get the season in. Um, and then all of this, um, corrective action will happen as soon as the season's over. The one thing that we want to make sure of is that the courts are structurally sound, and that the community is getting the product that was voted, and it, it's expected. There's a lot of questions as to, there was a staircase poured, and then the staircase was ripped up. And that just that just goes to show that we are actually watching this project in making sure that everything is done to meet our specifications. The store, the stairs were poured, they did not meet our specifications, we asked them to be removed and redone. We are working with Rad and Activitas, we have bi-weekly meetings on this prog- of project. We continue to ask questions, and we have a great working relationship to make sure that the community is getting the courts that they promised. So I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank, thank you, Michelle, I'll start, Mr. Farag.
Thank you, uh, from your presentation, uh, I think the community's going to want to know, how are they going to fix the cracks that are currently in there? Yeah, let's start with that.
Yep, so some of the cracks are micro-cracking, and it is expected with a post-tension concrete court. We are more concerned with the, there's a larger crack that runs, um, from end to end on Court Number Four, and that, that caused alarm for us. SGH has measured that crack, and has given us the tools to continue to measure that crack, to make sure it's not moving. And to make sure that's something that was just done in tensioning. Um, Rad and their structural engineer have agreed to grind that surface down as well, to see if the crack is actually structural or it's subsurface, so, um, the cracks are I don't want to say they're common, smaller cracks are more common, and when you put the slurry down in the final layer, you would never see these cracks. But because we're playing on an unfinished surface, all of these things are coming to light.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Crayton?
I guess I'm concerned, I think that we'll have to you know, continue to watch this very carefully, and I know Michelle, this is very difficult for you to have to report on this, but we do appreciate a full and complete report. And this is not pleasant for the town, but when something goes wrong, the best thing to do is fully, um, explore it and disclose it right away, disclosure is, is where we have to go on this.
Yeah. Agreed. Mr. Grady?
Michelle, I'll be brief, um. So go by your own stated report, I think the town can rest assured that the project is going to be complete, and the courts are going to be perfect, it's just a little bit of a delay.
That, that is true, and, um, if in fact the structural engineer comes back and says the courts aren't perfect, then, you know, we may have some heartburn now, but we'll make sure we get those courts that we were promised, and we'll, we'll get the twenty-five plus years out of them, um, that we expect.
So, perfect, so in other words, the town's going to get what it's paying for.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Flex?
Michelle, you said it, we're going to get the courts that we're looking for, uh, it's just going to take a little bit of time, so appreciate you following up.
Sure. Yeah, and, um, keep us posted on any deviation from what you just articulated as the course correction, and, you know, the, the checks and balances along the way, if there, if there are issues, let's get ahead of it. You know, we say we don't govern by Facebook, but it's, um, it's not pleasant to, to read through the. hyperbole and, and the misinformation that's out there, so. Thank you for staying on top of this, and we'll get the courts we, we ordered.
And I'll, I'll have a memo out after SGH's report by probably the end of next week, so we'll, we'll have another update as to the actions we're taking.
Okay, great, thank you. And, and goes without saying, you're in constant communication with the schools.
Yes, that is, that is true.
Yep. Okay, thank you. All right, town manager update. Mr. Senior?
So the warrant is printed, it's been dropped at the post office. So everybody should be getting one of these at home in the next couple of days. It's not junk mail, please hold on to it, it's very important. And, and hold on to it until town meeting, which is May twelfth, seven, the gym. There's a, there's a webpage, it's been opened up that has more information, more information to be added. So if you want to learn more about any articles, it's information on its website. There's plenty of meetings to look at. I'm letting James Dean and I have a little, uh, pre-chatting review of the warrant today, so that will be on the, for three in the next couple of days. So please read up, learn, and ask any questions and get any information you needed in advance of the meeting. I'm on a great town meeting.
Thank you.
Question? Chris, there was talk about understanding the total town hall staffing. And as you know, I've asked you numerous times to give me a, a list of the town hall employees and their salary and, and where they're located, and you just basically refused a couple of times. I find curious, but you did say that you hired the Collings Center. Did you hire the Collings Center?
No, the board directed me not to, so.
Okay.
Protect Collings Center.
So we still.
Work on the base, which is now available, has every salary for every single lead, the fiscal, for, for.
I asked for ten years for a history.
So we have ten years of terror, and they're all there.
So your staff, this is something that you would put to the elected select board member to do that rather than.
So this, this is not an agenda topic at the moment, and it wasn't brought up in your select board comments. If you'd like to talk about it, we can put it on the agenda for next week. But his comments were specific to the warrant and town hall. He didn't bring up staffing or anything like that, so if you'd like it on.
I don't think, I think that's improper. I think when the town manager is making a report, an elected select board member can ask questions. But he's clearly not going to answer it, and you're clearly going to squelch it, so we'll move along.
A select board member can ask questions of the report he provided?
I'm not sure I agree.
Okay. Would you like it on next week's agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
No, we, well, will that be at the town meeting?
No, we have a meeting.
Oh, okay, yes. I, I'd like to, I, I really would like to get a, a feeling for that. And I think it's, it's, we, we have a pretty robust town hall staff. So, and the purpose of this is to understand how staffing and costs, and do they, are they going up or they're going down? And it's just, you know, a basic understanding of town government. That's all it is. I, I wouldn't read more into it than that.
Okay. Okay, um, select board comments. Mr. Plex?
Nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Mr. Grady?
Uh, should I wait for topics not reasonably anticipated?
Yes.
Then, I'm good.
Okay, um, Mr. Creighton?
Just what I said earlier.
Okay, Mr. Farag?
Oh, thank you. I just want, as Town Manager Senior stated, the warrant is coming in the mail, and I think it's important for the citizens to know that this budget, unlike other towns, does not include an override. And so if you look at all the communities around us, or, or even at a far distance, many are going through massive budget problems with massive overrides being asked for. And that is not happening in this community because of the fiscal management that is done through all the different boards, town hall and the like. So I think that that's something that, it's not on the, the front page of the town warrant, but it should be noted and duly noted. And it, it's quite an accomplishment because, as I said before, you can read the, the papers or what's going on in the other towns as they're going into the, the budget season in their town meeting season like we are. And the effects that it's having are quite disparate between all of the different towns. Some are passing overrides, some are not, but we do not have one, and the fiscal management has been very sound. And I'd like to thank all the town boards and of course, town hall as well.
Great.
That's an outstanding point.
Thank you. Shockingly, I don't have any comments, so. I said shockingly, so, um, we will move on to approval of the minutes of April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Does anyone have any comments, motions, corrections, or changes to the minutes of April eighth? So, no one has any, so. Oh. Oh, Mr. Frog, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you were.
Nope, nope, they're, they're ready to go, yeah.
Oh, they're ready to go, okay. So, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty-five?
All moved.
Second?
All in favor, roll call.
Chris Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, thank you. We do have one topic not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours. This just came to my attention today from Mr. Grady, so I will let Mr. Grady speak to it.
Being on the Roads and Sidewalks Committee, we've looked at connectivity and trying to find some of the things, and this is safety issue. We're looking to get a sidewalk laid between King Street going down Pond to three A, to get the kids across the street and up to school. There's bus areas, parents walk, and they bring them up, you know, down Beechwood, up King, and that's just a sidewalk going on. The problem is, right now, it does lie somewhat in the fifty-foot buffer zone. So we're up before Conservation Commission right now. And our board, including, uh, strongly recommends it. And so I'm asking that the select board does the same. I just have, if I can sign this, if it, anyone wants to sign it, I'm going to bring it before Charlotte Pecto and get it down her tomorrow so she can present it because we have the ConCon meeting at six thirty, was it May first? And, uh, and I'm hoping everybody attends. But again, I know there's, people say, why not, you know, for anybody else? But this is for children and it's for safety. It's not for any one individual, it's for everybody that wants to walk that street, get their kids across. And, um, again, the genesis of the Roads and Sidewalks Committee was connectivity. And we started out with the schools, so sidewalks are focused towards the schools out from there. So I hope that I can get the support of my colleagues, and they'll sign this, and I will get it, uh, dropped off tomorrow.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion to, uh, support the, the Roads and Sidewalks Committee request to put a sidewalk in between from King Street.
King Street.
To three A.
To three A. And present to the, and present to Conservation.
And that's along Pond Street?
It's, yes, it's Pond Street, Pond Street extension going across to King, and three A to King.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about it?
I, I would ju- just say I'm, you know, in approval of it. And from being on the ConCon many years ago, I know they might have different look at things, but it would happen all the time, there'd be public construction projects where we're making improvements in the town for different reasons, and you need, and it would be within the fifty-foot buffer. So I, I think the impacts would be very minimal, if any, as far as we're putting the sidewalk there. And sometimes it can be an improvement because if you have curbing, it'll keep, where you don't have anything now, things just flow right over, you know, into the wetland, and by actually having curbing, it actually makes things better. So, you know, it, it puts everything towards the drain, so I, I, you know, it's, it would be a great improvement.
Well, I want to say this before the rap, because I know people want to go, is that they made, we were able to do it because we could afford it at the time. It was the impervious sidewalk on Soria Street. And David, you put it perfectly about the town maintaining its stewardship. We just don't have the money for that small strip. So we're doing a stretch to get the sidewalk in.
Yeah.
We're not taking, it's originally, we're taking, moving it out to the street. So I just want to put that out there for everybody, that it will be most likely an impervious sidewalk because it's within the budget that we have.
That's fine.
Mr. Creighton?
Yeah, I concur with what David said, and Paul. I would actually share with David on, on ConCon, and as people may remember, I was chair for a number of years before I put in term limits. There are provisions in, in which you can work around or make sure that moves forward. And this clearly is a compelling civic interest. And the purpose of, of, of wetlands protection is not to deny everything, it's to protect. And I've been and looked at the area, and I, and I think it can be properly mitigated. And I think that we should let the ConCon know that it's, if the rest of the board agrees, of course, that it is something that we agree, so I would strongly be in favor of that.
Great, thank you. And I'll just, I'll just say briefly, coming out on Street from the high school, turning right or north onto three A all the time, I see kids waiting at that crosswalk light all the time, coming from lower Pond Street by the reservoir, and so that sidewalk makes all the sense in the world. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve, to, can I have a motion to support the Roads and Sidewalks Committee request for a sidewalk on lower Palm Street?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, roll call?
Lex, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
And if someone could just sign for me, that would be great.
Okay.
I'm not going to.
I'll do this. So, um, as mentioned, we have a meeting next Tuesday. We will have executive session at seven o'clock. And we're going over the agenda tomorrow, tomorrow morning. So if anyone has anything else that they would like on the agenda, we'll probably be just doing a quick review for town meeting. We will have a third quarter financial update for Mr. Senior, and then any other licenses, events, or whatever that may come up. And Mr. Creighton's topic. So can I have a motion to adjourn at nine oh two PM?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Frog, aye.